I'm gonna open the meeting. Okay, Phil? Okay, and so for the record, this meeting is being recorded. So, um, this is time for you to, uh, leave twenty-eight back to seven.
Hi.
If you'd like to introduce yourself and be able to go.
My name is Liz Altman. I am the Director of Transportation Planning with T E C Engineering. And we've been retained by the town to start looking into improvements along Route twenty-eight. And so I wanted to come and introduce myself and kind of introduce the project. And because it seems like it's been a little while since North Reading has had a major transportation improvement project. Maybe Route sixty-two, ten years ago or so. So this is a, we're talking about a fairly substantial project from one end of town to the other along Route twenty-eight. Complete evaluation of the entire corridor. And let me just run through the quick steps of the planning and designing of a major transportation program like this. First, we identify the project itself and the goals that we're trying to achieve by, you know, of the project. At the same time, we try and understand the schedule of the design and the permitting of the project. We develop the alternatives. We have a major public outreach campaign. And then we move into securing the funding, design, and hopefully then from there move into construction. So where we are right now is just the project identification phase. And that is where we, we're going to put out the brief public interest survey. Quick and dirty, not dirty, but quick, just to kind of get the feel from the town that twenty-eight is where they want to spend their money. We've heard from staff that, from Danielle and John, that they have heard from the town that the town would like a more friendly feel along Route twenty-eight. Safer for pedestrians, safer for vehicles, slow traffic down. So those are some goals that, you know, have been heard anecdotally. But what we would like to do is just kind of, this first blush survey is, is this what the town wants to do? Do they want sidewalks? Do they think it's a valuable expenditure of the town's money to move forward with design? Also, what we are doing at this point, oh, I wanted to talk a little bit about project schedule. Doing a project like this, the design and permitting will probably take eighteen months to two years. And then during that time, we will try and position it for funding through the state, through the Transportation Improvement Program, the T I P. Those are typically five years out. So, um, you know, projects that if we, you know, put together a good concept and get some public approval in the next eight months or so, we're looking at construction probably in twenty-twenty-eight, somewhere around there. So you're also in a challenging MPO in the Boston region. Lots of money, but lots of competitors for that money. So you want to have a really good project that addresses pedestrians, bicyclists, addresses safety concerns of all roadway users. T E C has also been retained to start looking at those design alternatives. And what we are doing right now is in the data collection and evaluation phase, looking at what the right-of-way is, what, whether existing issues are, and coming up with several alternatives, concepts for the entire corridor. Those we again will bring to the public in a more formal type of feedback program. You know, maybe some public meetings, as many as we need to do to kind of get some buy-in. And then we will move on to the design of the twenty-five, you know, seventy-five P S N E design phases and securing the funding. So I just wanted to kind of let you know, I know there were some questions on the survey about why it wasn't very detailed, but that's where we are right now, is just in the identification phase. And so I'm happy to work with you on this if you have specific questions reworded or wanted to add anything. But we're really just looking for a first blush from the town population at this point.
Okay. I know we got some questions about the survey. It's a kind of zero. I got kind of a basic question, Paul. If we decide, if we decided through this process that we wanted to decrease the speed limit on Route twenty-eight as where it goes through town, D O G considers that to be a connector road between Reading and Amherst along this, and they set the speed limit. How successful are you normally in a situation like that and getting them to reduce that?
Well, that's a kind of a different question. The state sets, has a specific procedure for setting speed limits. And right now, it is based on the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which is where eighty-five percent of people are going at or below. So people are probably going between forty and forty-five miles an hour on some stretches of twenty-eight in town on average. So from that standpoint, they're not going to just lower the speed limit. However, if we come forward with a campaign of pedestrians, bicycles, the road diet, maybe like they did in North Redding, the three-lane section instead of a four-lane section, we might be able to convince MassDOT that we need to design for a lower speed limit. And then, then they would come back in after it was designed and lower the speed limit.
That's my, my fear, hopefully, because I've heard of his reading and planning, but this is what it tried and then the state refused to let them lower the speed limit. And so traffic calming measures are, end up like a roundabout or something like that, end up becoming the only way to get some control over it.
Right. So we would look, what they did in, what the state did in Reading was narrow the travel lane and, you know, brought out those shoulders, made it more comfortable for people on the road that were not vehicles. I don't know, I haven't not seen any results from that yet, if it has succeeded in slowing any of the traffic in that area. So, but that's what we would attempt to do in one of the scenarios. And another scenario would just be providing for bicycles and pedestrians outside of the travel lanes. But there are a lot of commercial businesses along that area, so you have to be a little careful.
So on, on Hable Street, they, when they put bicycle lanes in on a certain section of it going into Reading, or in Reading, and they ultimately lowered the speed limit by five miles an hour then. So, I don't think that's D O T, that's a lowed road, so I imagine they have the authority to do that without having to consult anybody.
No, actually, all posted speed limits have to go through the state.
Yeah. They're warned, didn't they? They, they, the town did it and then they notified the state, the state said no, we'll change it back.
They loaded the third hill.
Yeah.
And then the state came back.
Said thirty-five.
And no, the state came back and started to go back to the original speed and they covered up all that thirty mile an hour speed signs.
Forty-four.
Right. They brought it back to forty and now it's, now they went through the state and did it the right way and the state gave them thirty-five.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's good.
You know, so now it's, now it's posted thirty-five.
So my concern there is that with the speed limit that's, that a speed limit of forty miles an hour out there on twenty-eight, you know, interacting with bicycles and things on, you know, could get to be a tenuous situation. So having a bicycle lane next to cars going forty miles an hour.
Right. Well, we would have to design the roadway, MassDOT has specifications for designing for forty mile an hour roadways. It's also over ten thousand vehicles a day on Route twenty-eight, so that's another step. So the bicycle facilities either have to be buffered, so there has to be striping between the vehicles and the bike lane, or they have to be physically separated on, on curb in a shared use path.
Okay, so I know some of the board members have questions about the share of the report.
What? I, I have one. This, this survey I looked at, I saw it, the monkey.
Survey monkey.
The survey monkey. That's not the same one we saw last week, is it, Danielle? It looks like there's less questions in it this week than two weeks ago. And it's only, there are three questions. One of the big things we had was it, it was really heavy on bicycles, more than walking. And it's like, when you go and look around, I mean, the people who are riding bikes are doing it for more exercise, they're not going from point A to a store, they're going from point A back to point A, or some go to work, and, but, you know, they go a long distance. And it just didn't seem like it made a lot of sense. We've done, we've had surveys done before and the results of the surveys just didn't, I thought they were more confusing than really helped what we were looking for.
Okay.
I, this, maybe the way it's worded or something, it's much, I read it again, it was much better. The one confusing one was when we're asking, what's your, what, what about importance?
The three transportation.
Yeah, the three transportation things, it's all in one, it's kind of like.
Yeah.
You know, that, that, that one, it, it was kind of, I thought I, it was just kind of difficult to understand what, what you were gonna use to get out of, you know, what you were gonna get out of that. And that's almost one that you could maybe make more than one question.
Question four, that one?
I think that's the one.
Yeah, number four. I think that what we were trying to get out of there is just how people, what their current vision of Route twenty-eight is. Is it, is it just a place for people to get from point A to point B? Or do we, I mean, I can reword it, cause I, I, maybe that, maybe that's, you know, what is your vision, what do you want Route twenty-eight to be?
Right. I could just see people looking at that and say, well, I'd like to put this, but I want to put this in this. You know, and it's not enough.
Okay.
There's, I don't want to get too much information, but that question is so broad, I don't think you're gonna get the information you really need.
Correct. Okay. I will reword that question to make it more like, what would you like Route twenty-eight to be?
Yeah. But I, you know, I, I do, not having, I understand the issue with having bicycles and bicycle access and things.
Right.
But being really heavy on that was, was, I thought was an issue, and I think it's, I think it's backed off a little bit.
I think, in order to get any kind of federal or state funding, you have to provide for both bicycles and pedestrians on the roadway.
Oh, definitely pedestrians. You know, and I don't, I'm not, I don't have a problem with bicycles, it's how do we do it and do it right?
Right.
It's still, you know.
I think, I think, however Chris is pointing to, that there are places where bicycles are, are a form, are a actual form of transportation. And there are places in, I think, Port Clinton, I think, out here, where they're just a form of enjoyment. And so you really, so when you're designing for, for transportation, you're designing to allow as many people as possible to get to work or back or do their traveling without having to, without having to use a car. And when you do it in a town like this, it's, you know, the money spent doesn't decrease the level of transportation that we have. And so I think it is not a win there.
Yeah. That, and I, I thought there was also something here about public transportation. I don't think we're ever gonna get good public transportation in this town because we used to pay into it and hadn't done. Buses from right down Main Street, they never stopped. Now they go around us totally.
I don't, I don't remember having any.
I don't, I don't think there really is anything in here.
Right. Um, it does, it's, it's, it is something that we, you know, have to work with MassDOT on because it, you know, they have the, they have their standards and that has to, they apply that unilaterally across the state.
So basically, what you're saying is we have to leave the bicycle stuff in there because that's gonna be a requirement or a commitment just to, to providing that kind of transportation area, it's gonna be part of our approval.
Right.
Even though we realize right up front that it's strictly, not, not totally, but almost strictly a recreational situation.
Right. And the people that would use a forty mile an hour road to bicycle on are usually more experienced bicyclists. You're not going to put bicycle lanes on Route twenty-eight and the high school kids will use that.
Or have some toddler, like, you know, three, five, four.
Right. So you want them somewhere else, but.
Yeah.
So this is, that's what we would have to look at, is those options on how we can provide for everybody and keep everybody safe.
Okay, any comments?
Yeah, Lynn, thanks for coming out. So you mentioned, just to piggyback on the chair's comment, do you have any examples of where you've been successful getting that past the state with speed limit reductions for projects?
Uh, speed limit reductions. We are in the process of a couple of corridor studies that we're trying to, to do that with. One out in Harvard, I just lost where the other one was. But I, we have been successful in evaluating the safety of a corridor and petitioning the state to lower the speed limit based on the character of the roadway and, you know, I think we know the eighty-fifth percentile speed, I just don't remember it off the top of my head. We did a couple of A T R counts, the automatic counts that record the speed. And I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
But it sounds like it's a challenge unless you do it the Reading way.
Well, you know, well, you know, I would, I would think, you know, cause we're looking at developing some kind of a town center kind of thing out there, that if we actually did that, if we actually got that accomplished, that would be a good reason for them to slow that speed limit down. You could almost, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Be almost forced to do it by, by creating an area where people will congregate and causing them to allow us to lower the speed limit. But other than that, that was why, that was my first question, cause I had read about that going down the road and they just, it's not very, the success is limited.
Success is limited. I have heard rumblings that they're trying to be more context sensitive and think about the design speed. Whether that's gone to everybody, you know, every reviewer in every district, we'll see.
Yeah, I think that, because they, I think it's gonna be a rough go because I know that the D O T from many years ago, dealing with them on different things that we tried to do, I know they consider that to be a connector road, they don't consider that to be a town, a downtown road.
Yeah.
Or a town square road or any of those things. So without having some kind of a designation such as that, they're not gonna hear it. They're just gonna, they're gonna, because it's a connector road, connecting those two places where they already, where they have town centers.
This though, Mr. Chairman, this needs to run kind of in parallel with the development that we want to do on twenty-eight and make it more friendly and dense. And so again, with the durations it takes to engineer it, to get it through, we have to start this process, so. And it just needs to be symbiotic with what we're doing on the development side with, you know, Winter Street, twenty-eight, all that.
Yeah, well, my concern is that if you don't have, if for some reason the marketplace doesn't accommodate that, that development, that we could go through this whole redesign thing and end up with just exactly what we still have.
Yeah.
Well, the goal would be to make it safer and more efficient for all the roadway users, whether, you know, whether the design speed is forty or thirty-five, we have to design it for right now for the forty mile an hour road.
Right.
To make it as safe as possible. So there's no downside to doing this project because it will improve the signals, it will put sidewalks on the road at a minimum. So, I mean, there's no downside to starting this process.
Okay, so just a, just a quick question about an overview, the, what your, what your company's gonna do is reevaluate, is gonna evaluate Route twenty-eight and then come up with some suggestions on how to make it more friendly, if you will. And even though the speed limit changes might not be in the, in the cards, you're basically gonna recommend things like sidewalks and bike lanes and all those things. And so you really, you really would like this survey to come out somewhat in favor of bike lanes because that, because ultimately, the goal, what you're gonna produce is to get the state to give us money to fix it.
But if the, if, if ninety-five percent of the town says there's no reason to put bike lanes on this road, we can possibly try and use that to our benefit to steering the state to the design that the town is most in favor of. That makes, like, they, they are, they do listen to people.
Yeah.
They do listen to the municipalities. So the more public outreach that we have and starting with this, you know, just kind of general survey helps because then we can say, all right, we heard this from the town, you know, this is the data that we have, and this is our concepts. And then we went back to the town and showed them our concepts, and everybody liked this one, which incorporates X, Y, and Z. And then, and then we kind of move on with that, from there with the state.
I, I think things like sidewalks and those kind of things are gonna, are gonna be well received. I think you're gonna get a lot of positive feedback on those. And perhaps even if you think about the three-lane thing with a turn lane.
I think that's the best thing.
Might be good because, I mean, I drive around town a lot and, and go to the gas station out here, and many times coming out of that gas station and there's not a car coming either way until right up. And, and, you know, and a lot of different times, a lot of different times a day, so there's, I think there's some very, there's very small amount of traffic bunching, even though right now we are sort of in a recovery phase. It seems like when you go to the highways, there's more traffic than there ever was.
Yeah.
So, so you would think that would translate to a similar situation here, but it doesn't seem to have. So.
Pretty light.
Yeah. So anybody could jump right ahead, please?
Yeah, I think, Rich. When I read this, I think it's almost like self-fulfilling kind of sort of, in the sense that it doesn't capture the, a vision that people would have any like imagination of how these things would improve their lives. Like not having it tied into the, the plans from Main Street. Like I think that a lot of people just look at this and go like, none of this could improve my life right now because of the status quo. Like whereas if it somehow incorporates, imagine a world where would you find these things valuable? I think would encourage people to have a forward-thinking imagination of how their life would be different. Because if it's just a status quo we have right now, it'd be like, why bother? I mean, I don't know how, how you could do that, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a big, wide street, you know, just, I was taking more note of it this weekend. It's four lanes and there's sidewalks for a great portion of it, they're minimum five feet. So they're pretty broad already and so you're thinking to yourself, what can we do? So, I like you, I do like the three-lane center turn, I think that does slow things down.
Does.
Makes things easier and then the opportunity.
I think it's easier because you're driving in two lanes, the guy, three cars in front of you decides he's gonna make a left-hand turn. What's he do? He stops in that travel lane.
Right.
And everybody's gotta go around him.
I agree.
If you, if you had that third lane, you could pull into that third lane and you know you're making that left-hand turn. Now people just continue on the same road they run. If you're making a right-hand turn, you slow down and make that right-hand turn.
So there is a challenge, and then now you have twelve, fifteen more feet to work with for bike lane, more sidewalk, whatever. But as Lynn said, one of the challenges along twenty-eight, at least where it's dense, is you have so many curb cuts that it's very dangerous, at least on that side you pick. We're gonna put the bike lane on the right side, whatever side it's on.
Yeah.
You know, you're cruising along, you're like at thirty miles per hour and there's all these turns, it's just very dangerous.
Cars coming in, going out, yeah.
But where it opens up, you know, hey, you know, it might make a lot of sense. I don't know some of those strategies, you know, where you create almost like.
Yeah, the south side, on the south side has fewer curb cuts, the south side in Main Street.
Yeah, I mean, and that's what I'm sure the survey.
Couple of nice long properties where you could, where you could run on for a period of time, so.
I don't ride my bike anymore, I just, it's too dang dangerous.
D O T would wanna do it.
Oh, well, yeah.
Even with all the bike lanes?
Well, this is before bike lanes, but.
Well, any other comments or questions to the chair? Yes, please, Rich.
Yeah, thank you. So Rich Altman, so what you were saying was really interesting because there has been studies done, we've done studies, tree scape, things like that, where there was some imagination that was done on what our Main Street could look like. And if you, if you do go out with a survey that just says, what do you want to do with our current street, you know, no one's gonna imagine that. So there is an effort, I mean, unlike, so you have, Handover has a small point downtown, Reading has probably the next point downtown. We actually have the ability, what we're thinking about, the ability of creating a downtown for itself. And I think the state will find that very compelling because it's gonna be around economic development, so it's gonna be lifestyle development. So if people don't know that, they won't be able to comment about slowing traffic down, even in that particular area, just like any downtown would have. So single lane up in Handover, and I think it's double, but really tight lanes in Reading. But we don't have, we have a highway. You know, and people can't even imagine, I mean, we're one, right? And that's what we are, we're one. So people can't even imagine without us somehow bringing it out, and we're thinking of doing some development in that area. And so somehow the survey should reflect that possibility because that people could think about.
So Rich, survey as in show examples, you know, or be more visual? And that, that's what I think we were saying to Danielle the last time, you know, and admittedly, Lynn, you know, not meeting or anything, I was, I was criticizing, like, I want the effort to show more, give me sections of what, these are five different sections, cross-sections of the road, from sidewalk to sidewalk or right-of-way to right-of-way, what these possibilities are. I mean, with greenery and all the things, like buff them out. And because I think that's what people need to see, is the possibilities. If they're just, as Jeremiah said, as Rich said, if they're just answering the survey, what would you like to see? Bike lane? And it's just not gonna be, it's not inspiring.
It won't be inspiring.
Right.
And that is the next phase. I mean, we don't have to do this phase, I just, I was, what I really was interested in was if people liked what they did in Reading, in Reading, that three-lane section. So maybe, you know, that's kind of where this is geared, probably a little geared to that. Like I, I want to know if people think that that's something that would work in North Reading. So maybe let me look at this again and.
Even if it's showing little vignettes of other projects that have the three lanes. So in that question about traffic, you're showing examples of the three-lane or, I don't know, just trying to get more.
Yeah.
People sometimes are more visual.
I can try and.
With little work, I mean, it's like, I'm not asking for the survey to create all these drawings, but.
Right.
Using little images that conjure up thoughts of this is what it could look like would be.
And I think the, the Reading, what's on the ground, right, really isn't, hasn't been on the ground in Reading. Because they're, they're putting their final, finally putting their work coat on. The road's all torn up again because they weren't able to finish it, they rushed it too fast.
Oh.
They, they were able, I think they finished the road fairly well from the railroad tracks south, but from the railroad tracks north, they've just been working at it all, all spring. They've been, they've been pulling all the manholes off and it's, road's a mess again. They painted a lot of it on the ground, but they didn't do anything else, they didn't do other, other ways to, to move the traffic, they painted it.
Yeah.
Which is, it's okay, but it's just, you know.
Right. I guess the last time I went through there was just paint on the road, I didn't realize they were going back to reconstruct the whole thing.
Yeah, they're doing some other stuff, I don't know, I don't know what they're gonna do, but it may not be more than paint, or they may, you know, just, they may bring some, some.
Right. Some thermo and.
Yeah, some things that are, or makes noise and stuff like that.
I understood it was a pilot project too, they, so that's probably why they didn't do much more than paint the first time. Because if it didn't work, then paint is easy to eradicate and repaint as four lanes, so.
Well, the other problem is it's train too. The rotaries can work well, like the one-twenty-nine rotary, I'm sure you've been around that one-twenty-nine rotary. If people read the signs and actually did what they were told, they could get around that rotary a lot quicker. I learned how to use that rotary, that style rotary, when I went to Ireland. You rent the car and it hands you a pamphlet on how to use their roundabouts. Same thing with one-one-fourteen in, in Middleton, right? Where you've got the center turn lane.
Right.
You, all you have to do is get across one lane of traffic, go to the center turn lane, then. then you can join the lane of traffic here or on Mersey. People don't know how to use that.
Right.
Because they've never been taught how to use it.
And the state has been going, um, towards roundabouts. We, we will look at that, but, um, there's some limited right of way. Um, and there's, um, buildings pretty close. Probably if there was a redevelopment area that was going to happen, you would look at that. Um, but some, if some of the, you'll, you can go down and look around. Roundabouts are spar, are smaller, but when you have, um, limited right of way, they're a little tricky to put in.
A little tricky to put in, right. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much for coming and explaining some of that. And hopefully we gave you some input.
Yes, I appreciate your, I appreciate your, um, having me and, uh, letting me, um, talk and pick your brain a little bit.
Yeah, we, we're serious about it, we want, we want to have it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let me.
We don't mind helping, we don't mind picking up brains.
So, I will, um, go back and I'll adjust a couple of those questions and I'll send it over to you sometime next week or so.
Thank you.
Sure, alright, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to hear Danielle's own little bit of Jerry.
Yeah, well, actually Jerry's here for our, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nice, thank you.
He's here for our drilling discussions regarding some.
For discussionary purposes, I guess.
Okay.
Just in case anybody asks me questions.
If you see us swatting, we're just trying to get a flag. If we're not waving, mine and I are being attacked by a lot.
I have a right to get my electronic devices because I left a phone. And so, it's so long since it had a handle, you know?
Jerry was kind of lucky to join us tonight because I have a few things that I've, we've talked about doing workshops, discussions on, and they're all zoning related, they're all online, so. In particular, the accessory dwelling unit question, I know that's a lot to chat about, so I figured we could start with that.
Well, I've done a little research into that too, but, um, so let's, uh, jump right into accessory dwelling units, so.
I didn't quite hear you, can you say it again? I honestly didn't.
Hey.
Hey, I'm getting old.
Accessory dwelling, ADUs.
That comes to your defense sometimes, it's good.
Yeah, because AD, we've been talking about, we've been talking about ADUs for a while, trying to figure out what to do about them.
We've been talking about those for sixteen years.
Yeah, I know, but, but, um, you know, the, it has all the obvious issues. That is, if you try to do it someplace and enable a million dollar neighborhood or whatever you want to call it, you know, they think that it devalues your property and, and then there's, how do you control who's in there? And when does it become a rental as opposed to a family and so forth and so on?
Well, we're finding a lot of full blown kitchens being put in. And I, I can't stop. Because the state of Massachusetts, the building code says you have to, have to allow it. So, on the Mass, Massachusetts General Law one forty-three, I don't have a choice. So, I have to allow it. So, I've tried to find ways of maybe eliminating stoves. I think Davey and I.
Yeah, we talked about that once ago.
And we did come to, uh, I should say blows with one particular person. We kept going back and forth and no matter what I did, I just couldn't seem to stop these people putting in the stoves. So, I went to the state, state says you can't do it. You gotta do something within your zoning bylaws that shows a description, um, that shows a definition of what a stove is or what a kitchen is. So, I reached out to, um, one of our communities and they do have that description. But I said, how, how does it work? He said, to some of the people, it works for them. And others, it does not. They fight it and they win. So, Danielle and I were talking earlier and would it be best to have, allow certain square footages for people to put in second kitchens? Seven hundred square feet, nine hundred square feet, um.
It's a, it's a sticky wicket.
It's just, it's just conversational purposes only.
Yeah, no, no, no.
No, that's all it's.
You know, it, it doesn't mean that that's what we should have and that's what we should do.
No, no, I'm just, it's the number you threw out, that's what, that's, it was like, that's bigger than my kitchen.
No, 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 no.
That's a second, that's a second.
He means the dwelling itself.
Yeah, but, that, that whole lyric, because when they put these kitchens in, they're putting a small living room in. They're putting a bathroom in. Well, if you're incorporating a bathroom, a living room, and a kitchen, and then you, you say this is an office, you and I both know it's a bedroom.
Yeah.
So, if you say, okay, we're gonna limit this, your second kitchen and all the amenities with it to seven or nine hundred square feet, that's what I know the town of Drakehead does. So, yeah, nine hundred square feet, great kitchen is big.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's all I took, I was thinking of.
No, 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 yeah.
Face, face, I you, Jerry.
Misspoke on that.
Lately I've seen, I've read a couple of publications where they, um, real estate stuff, where they are encouraging people to put in accessory dwelling units. And there's examples of a person who put one in and started renting out, making money, so put another one in, started making more money, made enough money to cover their whole mortgage, you know? So, I mean, they're encouraging people to do it. They, they hear things like that and they say, well, maybe we should do it. But I think that the answer here, um, is, uh, is, is a bylaw where, um, that allows them with whatever restrictions you've got on. So that you won't, you won't be fighting the stove deal. You'll be just making sure that they meet the requirements of a bylaw. What do you think about that?
It works for me. My, my position is I just want to protect the town.
Yeah.
That's, that's my job. My job is to make sure that the people that are gonna be in this town are gonna live here peacefully, that, you know, you're living in a town, you're not living in a city. And you want to be, you don't want to be encroached by everybody.
Right.
So, uh, and the encroachment I'm, I'm seeing is, is starting to happen with, with all these additional kitchens being put in. I'm seeing, uh, instead of seeing two cars at this property, I'm seeing three and four.
Right.
And it's gonna tax the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Jerry, what would you say are the numbers? You, you know your permits, I remember watching your presentation, you know, how many permits and how much they went up. But based on how many permits, how many are, for lack of a better way to put it, are really ADUs? You know, and without names, all that, but how many of them are, you know, these instances that you're running into?
I'd say about twenty to twenty-five.
A year, kind of, since you've been here?
Uh, I wouldn't say a year. I'd say, but since I've been here, about twenty to twenty-five.
Okay. And are they pretty much across the board as far as the different districts? They're, they're, like the RAs, RBs, all resi or any business?
No, no businesses.
All resi.
But I, um, I approached the state and I asked the state, what are the, what are other communities doing relative to this? They told me they have deed restrictions. So, I stopped, I basically went out, went out on the limb. I asked the state, can you give me a copy or a sample of a deed restriction? So, I took that copy, took that sample, sent it to, sent it to, uh, our legal counsel. Our legal counsel came back.
KP, huh?
Yeah, and they, they came back and it was so restrictive. People were looking at this and they were like, we're not signing this. I was having attorney after attorney after attorney following me saying, I'm not gonna have these people sign this. We're just gonna put these kitchens in. Is that correct? Well, yeah, legally, technically, you are correct. So, what I did is I took that deed restriction and I took out a lot of the language that KP law put in, sent it back to the state, talked to a couple of the state officials. And I was able to draft something that came, that I, um, that we came up with that's pretty close to what a lot of the other communities are, are doing, such as Middleton. And people are actually signing this deed restriction and they're attaching it to their deed. So, they're recording it and I wait for it to be recorded, then we issue the permit.
What's in the deed restriction, Jerry?
And what is the restriction?
The restriction is basically saying, it's a covenant saying that you are maintaining this as a single family. And you are not taking this, you're not renting any of these rooms out, you're not renting the kitchen out. You're not, you're not turning this into an in-law, basically an in-law unit. So, it doesn't become rental. And there's a ninety-nine year covenant on this deed restriction. And I'm not having any, right now, I'm not having any people push back on it.
I think we were, I think when we were talking about it, we were looking at, um, you know, going on, going a little further and that is actually creating, I don't know, an overlay district or a zone or perhaps just a bylaw that would allow someone to have an ADU and, um, as an in-law. I mean.
That works. I mean, if that's, if that's what the town wants to do, I don't have an issue with that. But the people are doing this, they're just taking it upon themselves to do it.
Yeah.
Um, and I just think it's wrong.
We have some that are legal in the town, though.
That is, we have four that are legal.
Yeah, but it was a period of time when the bylaws were not getting renewed. And during that time, some of them went in. And then they said, oh, we missed this, and we renewed the bylaws. And so then they renewed the bylaws again and zoned them out again. But for that period of time, there are a number of legal ones that were, uh, that were put in.
The problem is though, is both chiefs have confirmed they do not know where any of these ADUs are, whether they're the ones that have right or ones that are, you know, in Jerry's world that are legal.
So, I think that's why by.
So, that's a problem.
So, that's why I think I was, thought I was leaning towards creating a bylaw of some kind. Because, you know, if you could create a bylaw and, and create enough, and not get enough protection in it, I don't know if somebody else has one, it sounds like they might be a little hard to come by, but, but, um, at least if you made it possible for them to do it legitimately, they would then let you know. So, you would, so that the police and the fire would know, you know, that there's, no, this is, this is, this is another unit. This house on fire, don't just look in the main house, there's an ADU here you need to look at as well. So, um, because they wouldn't be afraid to tell you, because.
Correct.
It fits with the law.
Well, all the, yeah, they're afraid, um.
Some are.
Well, they are, but the thing is, is, and this now ties into the accessory structures. Because we have, we have detached accessory structures that have their, they're putting kitchens, bathrooms, and I'm telling them, no, rip it up. You can't have a kitchen in there. Um, take it out. And they're, they're basically arguing with me, saying, no, 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 we're not. So, it's.
It's the lower accessory structure where you put a kitchen, that you should be looking.
Correct. And what started all this is there's a property on Spruce Street and I went through the zoning board of appeals. And zoning board of appeals said, yes, you can have this particular garage. And then the gentleman decided to put what he called, um, bonus rooms within this garage. Well, this bonus room turned into pretty much a second house. And I've been on top of it maybe two seconds. I, I've, I've held his feet to the fire relative to the building code. Um, and just to give you an idea how much I've held his feet to the fire, it's been two years he's been building this. That's how.
But Jerry, so did he, because I have more examples of the same, I think, unless you confirm, but they first went, got the zoning, um, you know, got through zoning on a, uh, call it a, a setback issue or whatever, right? And then, right when he, was it already built or it was built?
Oh, no, it wasn't, it was, at that point, wait, wait a minute, at that point in time, it was partially built.
So, what did he need the variance for?
I just came on board at the time.
What did he need the variance for though?
He needed the variance for the setbacks.
Was, and yet it was already built?
Oh, yeah.
So, but that's what I'm seeing and if there's anything.
And then I caught him on the height. I caught him on the height as well. I told him that it was, it was too tall. It was, uh, it was twenty, twenty-seven feet in height.
So, so here's the thing that I've seen in town is the, and this is a sly thing that somehow that this town, this board, and somebody needs to put teeth into it, whether or not we do in ordinance or not, is the end around that people are doing where they go to the ZVA to, to, to build a detached. I'm building a garage. And then they get to use, I'm building a shed, whatever it is, they get that shed in and then almost midway, they're, they're so cocky about it, they won't even wait till it's done. They'll come to Jerry, you know, after framing and say, yeah, you know, I changed my mind. I'm gonna make this a bonus room and I'm gonna put this, this, and this in it. They've already gone through ZVA, they had the neighbors, maybe one, just said, no, Joe's okay, he can build a garage.
Yeah.
And then the next thing you know, he got through ZVA, so he's got through the big hoop, she, whatever. And then they come and they go through in front of Jerry, now, now I want to build the bonus room. And it's kind of a sneaky way of, you know, getting a detached property. Now, I'm not as adverse, I, I, I'm not opposed to, um, the attached apartment, you know, within the.
Within the complex.
Very much, you know, supportive of that. But it's the detached that really we need some teeth in, because that's, that's what people are doing, you know? And I, I, I can, on this, you know, privately, I can give examples.
Oh, yeah.
That's your biggest issue, right?
What he just said is, is currently happening, two different properties currently.
Yeah, and I can name, because these were two years ago, I can name three that went through ZVA.
Plumbing co-conditions as well, that they, you know, how do they get around all those?
They have every right to put plumbing in there, they have every right to put electrical in there.
Yeah.
They have every, every right to do that, I can't stop them.
Except that if they have a septic system, which everybody in North Wright does pretty much, that means that they, they're adding a room, they're adding floors.
No, it's triggered by bedroom though, so.
I understand that completely, but also.
So, they're not telling Jerry it's a bedroom, so that it doesn't trigger it, right? Or does it not?
Well, you can also, it's also triggered by, it can be triggered by square footage.
It's also triggered by the amount of rooms.
Yeah.
The amount of rooms in general.
So, you can get them on that, maybe?
Yeah.
So, I mean, the, the, there are towns, I know there are towns that if you just increase the square footage, um, you have to have a review of it and to see if there's gonna be impact on the system. And so, and so that seems to help with the problem. Because, you know, if they're gonna increase, so they're gonna come in and ask for a building permit for anything, there has to be a review of, of what the square footage is and then maybe an inspection or whatever, and then proof that this is not gonna impact the septic system. Because it sounds to me like if you have a three bedroom home and you put a garage over here and then you put a living unit in it with plumbing, that's supposed to my, that was the base of the question. Now you're gonna hook up to this, but now you're overtaxing that system. And the Board of Health would have the ability to.
That is correct. That's correct. But we have, uh, you have to remember, we, we're supposed to only have one primary structure on the property.
Right.
One primary.
Right.
One little structure.
Yeah, and people are, are starting to use them as two primaries. We have one right here on Lowell, Lowell Road. And I know exactly where it is and they basically, uh, built it. I told them, uh, it's gonna come out. They got ahold of that contractor. I know they did it nights and weekends. I can't see it.
Yeah.
But I know, I, I know exactly what happened.
Yeah.
Do I have the right to go in there? Yeah, if I have, I get a search warrant, but how, administrator warrant, you should say.
The Board of Health might have the right to go in there.
Excuse me?
The Board of Health might have the right to go in there and evaluate it.
Yeah.
But either way, they're, most people are just doing it after the fact.
We're talking about all these different ways of, of catching people or doing something, you know? But I still think that the best course of action is, is a bylaw.
That's perfect, reason being is because we just don't have the manpower to enforce, to run around and perform that enforcement.
It has multiple advantages. It, first of all, it dictates the way it will be used and it, and it, and it lets the police and fire know how many people are in there. And then you have an accurate, something accurate. It also helps, another way it helps is because there's a value to it. And so, that increases the value of the property, which increases the tax base. So, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of value to be had by doing a bylaw that gives us some kind of control over what's happening. So, um, I think.
Do the, does the town want it though?
Well, you know, the problem comes from, you'd have, you'd probably have to take the town meeting and the question would be, you'd have to sell it. Because I think a number of years ago, you would have had a much more difficult time selling it than you do with right now. Because I think that the majority of our, of our good spaces are built out. And those houses, most of those big monster houses, they've already got one. So, they'd love to see it be, they'd love to see it be legal. They'd love to see, by the way, I have one, but it's legal now, you know? There's a number of things that when it became legal, everybody thought was better. So, there, there's a, um, so there's a value to it right down the line. Because it's, they'll admit to it, you can tax it, you know, I mean, they're, I mean, it's just as. So, I think that, that I, you know, I know you're looking for, to put some teeth into a bylaw that you already have. Uh, we'll support you on that if that's where you want to go. But I think we need to look real hard at a, at a bylaw and get it to town meeting and sort of, as they say, run it up the flank and see the salutes.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the things, I think the, the roadmap's there if we want to use it is Reading's. If you look at Reading's chapter five.
Somebody else told me that too.
It's got pretty much everything in it. The only thing it doesn't have in it is the item I mentioned about the end around. Because again, you know, they're specific in their detached, um, requirements as far as dimensionally, size wise, it can't be more than a thousand square feet or one-third, the lesser, one-third of the structure. So, if it's twenty-five hundred square feet, you know, you can only be one-third of that, it can't even be the one thousand. So if it's twenty-five hundred square feet, you know, you can only be one-third of that, it can't even be the one thousand. So, um, that gives you some proportionality, I think, which is really important, cause you don't have that McMansion behind the primary residence.
Yeah.
Um, it also doesn't allow you to be forward of the no-build zone, which is the front face of the building. Um, there's some setback requirements. There's a lot of dimensional, um, graphics and stuff, and I suggest everybody go to, go to it, it's section five in their, uh, two thousand and seventeen-
Excuse me?
What do you think of that idea?
Have you looked at it, Jerry? Cause it's pretty comprehensive.
I've seen it, yes.
Yeah, it's pretty comprehensive, and if we can make it better, um, to plug any holes, I think that's what we can do. But it still gets, it still gets down to whether people, I, I mean, you can write out a perfect zoning bylaw and improve on Redding's, but, you know, if you're a person that's living right now and you chose to live in North Reading on a one-acre lot with your home, and you weren't really buying into this whole thing, and your next-door neighbor, both neighbors on each side of you start building a detached, you know, fun house, if you will, with renters and all that, I mean, it is a quality of life element that's just as important as the fire and safety and the trash, the assessors, the septic. It's just, I, I'm sensitive to that, just saying, go for it.
The thing is, I think a lot of these newer subdivisions have covenants on them, um, that run to the east, right?
Private covenants to me, from the developers? I think they do, but the town is-
So, so, but the problem with that is that most, every one of them has an in-law of some kind, so they just never don't care. I, I think that making it possible for somebody to admit to it and make it legal is probably, um, uh, would, would help a lot, and it would give us the opportunity, as I said, to, to, uh, know what's going on.
Most towns have an amnesty once they initiate the program until one year or whatever.
Do you wanna look at it from that perspective, or do you, or do you wanna continue?
No, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that we have something etched in stone, because everything is just too, uh-
Wishy-washy, yeah?
Well, in the meantime, yeah.
Yeah, for a lack of a better term.
Yeah, yeah, I, it's all right, Jerry.
Mr. Chairman, the one thing is, everything in, in Redding, if you look at it, there's only one, um, you know, in the table, one that's a yes. It's all special permit.
Yeah.
So whether it's, and the, and the yes is one in the dwelling where there's no addition, that's the yes. That's by right, if you will. You can, as long as you pass, you know, with the building inspector, have everything up to snuff. But, um, the rest of it is special permit.
Right.
So, and I, I like that, because I think it should go through a group of people that are looking at it, taking into account the neighbors' comments, just like they will in ZVA, you know?
Yeah, but the question would be, so you have a public hearing, it's a special permit, so there's a public hearing, and the neighbors come in, and they don't want it.
You think it's always that black and white? I think it's just, they're trying to put it right ten feet away from my house and this and that. I think that's where you have to work out, that's why we're here to help me.
You're gonna have to work with the board of appeals to tell them, you know, be careful about-
And just try to figure out a way to do it. I mean, that's how I would approach it. I wouldn't be there, yes or no, it's more just to try to help.
And the other thing is the parking. That's the other thing, just like you said.
That's the biggest issue right now. That's what, that's what we're seeing.
Especially in these older community, you know, older subdivisions, in Swamp Pond Road. They're parking in the street. They don't have, I'm the only one on the street that uses their garage, although the next-door neighbor does, kind of. But I have a garage, and it's used, there's two cars in the garage, and I have two other cars for my children who are off the street. Make sure they're off the street.
Yeah, Redding's bylaw requires off-street parking. That's a requirement on every single accessory unit.
Exactly.
So, I mean, Nate, it's a good one to look at. It's, it'll give you a lot of ideas, and it, um, there's some holes that could be plugged, but it's, it's, it's a pretty thorough, um, with graphics and everything, section on it. That's a thing.
No, I definitely, I think that's great. The, the Redding bylaw is really thorough. I think that's a great one for us to, to start with. The one criticism I have heard of it is that it does allow for, I guess it's by special permit, but it does allow for, uh, the accessory dwellings to go into a detached accessory structure. And I was gonna ask that question, because based on our other conversations that we've had in the past, it seemed to me that that might be a concern, but it's something to consider. I, I guess I would just pose the question to Jerry, but you're seeing issues. Where are you mostly, like, is there, is there a place, is there a context where you would really not wanna see them, because you feel it would be more problematic, more dangerous? I mean, do you have an opinion on whether you make sure?
No, that's a broad question, I really, it's kinda hard to answer that.
Well, like a basement, you know, a basement, if it doesn't have the proper ingress, it'd be a dangerous situation.
It's like, I, I have to look at everything through the building code. So if I see something that's, um, if I see something that's, say, ten feet away, it's, it's an accessory structure, and it's ten feet away from that particular house, or it's within ten feet of that house, um, that doesn't work. Because now you have to have a one-hour fire rating on that accessory structure. You have to have a one-hour fire rating on that, on the house structure. Now, all of a sudden, you have an accessory structure that is now, they, they just added this little bump out to their house. Now the accessory structure is five feet away from their house. Well, you can't have a window on that side where that accessory structure is, because now you have potential for a fire, so now you don't have a one-hour fire rating. So now you have to have a two-hour fire rating. Window's gotta come out. These are things I'm seeing all the time, and I'm fighting with these people. I'm winning, but I'm fighting with them. And I'm trying to do it relative to life safety. My job is to protect the people, and, and it's to protect the people from themselves. So-
Yeah, the fight, what is it, twenty feet property line? Is it the one hour? Is it ten feet on property line?
Ten. So you get ten, yeah.
And that's regardless of there's another structure anywhere near it. If you're within ten feet of your property line, that whole side needs to be one hour. So, again, people are going with just, you know, zip wall and, uh, and cedar shingles and thinking, I'm good, and they're not good. You know, but they get, they have to get it rated.
Yeah.
But that's part of the code, and, and that's where I think you have the teeth, cause that's code. And, and, and their lack of knowledge on the code is not your fault, and if they involve either a designer or they're versing in the code, they should know moving that close to the property line is gonna-
A lot of those designers are a little sketchy, but-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but I mean, what I'm saying is that at least, that, those items are truly under your, you know, police powers, whereas this other stuff, as you mentioned, is, it's out of your hands, and you can't infer and all this stuff. So it, it puts you in a bad position not having a bylaw.
Hopefully that kind of answers, kinda sort of somewhat answers.
Yeah, I think what we should do is, I think that I should collect a bunch of bylaws from other communities, take a look at them, um, start working on a draft of at least points that we want to include. And like, I've already started some parameters, like, for example, you know, whether not to allow by a special permit, whether to allow certain zoning districts, or, um, you know, or everywhere by, you know, special permit, whether we do an overlay, um, detached or, or, or don't allow it in detached, um, things like that. So I think that we can start working on that, and then that will at least maybe give Jerry something to respond to, like, okay, this seems acceptable, or this seems likely to introduce new problems. Um, and then I did wanna bring up one other issue, which I, I've heard people talking about it before, and I, I have a feeling we're not gonna be able to control over it. The concern that in-law apartments truly are for family, and I don't think that that's something we have any ability to regulate. And I don't know if that's, is that, is, do you know if that's correct? Because if you have an accessory dwelling unit, I mean, I don't think we're allowed to check whether people are-
I don't think you are, really.
No, I, I just can't, I just can't go in there and just-
The only thing you're allowed to do, or via by, bylaws, is the rule like Redding and other towns have, which is the owner, an-owner, a N, an owner needs to be living in one of the dwelling, either the ADU or the primary. That's one of the rules, but-
Yeah, I think that we can do. I just, I don't wanna promise people that these are in-law apartments, but we have no ability to, you know?
And that was one of the reasons why a lot of the attorneys were calling me, and they were saying, wait a minute here. Um, you can't do this, because KP Law, what they did is they had language in, in the deed restrictions saying that, um, after forty-eight hour notice, I have the right to go into that unit and perform inspection. And that was basically attached to their deed. That's just-
That's a little wondrous, isn't it?
Yeah, that's wrong.
I would use that in there.
You know, you gotta think of who wrote it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Jerry, you, you, uh, so do you want, I, I know you came here originally to talk about some modifications of the bylaw. Do you, do you still wanna do something with that while we work our way through this EDU thing?
No, if you could just, this is more of a discussion type thing, and if we can bring something to town meeting at, at some point in time, that would be great.
We've been talking about it for a long time now.
We should be able to push this through pretty quick.
Yeah, and I think we need to do something about it, cause it's really, uh, I don't know, I just get, uh, I get antsy.
Is there anything, Mr. Chairman, we can do to help him, though, in the three, four months before town meeting?
It sounds like he's got, it sounds like he's got a pretty good job for working the whole town thing out himself, so.
I like the research you've done.
I don't know, I don't wanna damage anything he's done.
I'm, I'm asking you, I guess, cause I don't know the, what ability we have to quickly pass something-
Well, basically, he probably has a couple suggestions about some bodies getting written.
Well, that's what I mean, but that's a more comprehensive bylaw. I just mean, is there anything short-term that helps Jerry?
Well, that's kind of what I asked him, so, so-
Yeah, and that's what he's basically saying, and it's, it's kinda difficult to answer. I'm doing everything right now that I can in my power short-term, and that's relative to the deed, the deed restrictions. And my inspector is out there, Inspector Anzalone, he's just, he's doing an amazing job, and he's just going after the, he's not going after them, but he's just policing it, bringing it to my attention, and here I go on a letter-writing campaign. There's just not enough hours in a day, and I think we all feel the same way.
Right, yeah, you can't be changed.
I know the board of health is probably a good ally for you, but, uh, but they don't have much time.
Well, I think, I think, if I may, um, we should be able to get something done by, at a minimum, June town meeting. I don't know if we could do it earlier, it's kinda, that's pushed for October. It's only like two months, that's only a month, right?
That's gonna be difficult.
I mean, we can try.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna-
I think it might be nice to, well, we might be able to get something written, I'm sure, by then, but it would be nice to be able to have some of the public meetings happen.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, so that's why, I think Judy's a good, a good shooting, you know, a good place to shoot.
So that said, that's a year away, so how do we help Jerry for a whole year where he's gonna-
Is there anything we can do to help him?
You can't do anything.
If he needs any help right now. I think Jerry has to-
You can't do anything.
Yeah, he has to continue doing what he's doing.
Yes, if we get a bylaw in place, now he's got something to hang his hat on.
Right.
So, now that we've, uh, kind of, I don't wanna belabor it, but, uh, I have one more thing I wanna discuss.
Yep.
It's pools.
Oh, yeah.
All the fence lines.
Pools and fences.
Yeah, the fence.
I'm very frustrated at the fact that I have people, the, the, the state building code and the board of building regulators basically said to me, Jerry, you don't have the right to tell them to put a fence around their pool, if, if they have an automatic pool cover. Well, it basically says, um, in the exceptions for pools, spas and hot tubs with lockable safety covers that comply with ASTMF one, one, uh, one-three-four-six-two, section two, swimming pools with a power safety cover that complies with ASTM, same thing. Um, what it's basically telling us is, if they have a power cover, you don't need a fence around, around your pool, because you have a power cover. So I said to the, my question to the state was, okay, you lose power, which, is there any redundancy here? Well, can you define redundancy? Yeah, backup power. Oh, jeez, we didn't even think of that. Yeah, of course you didn't think of that.
And who closes the cover?
Excuse me?
And who closes the cover?
Correct. All of a sudden, uh, Rich has to run in the house real quick, and he has to dot in here, and there's nobody around. Somebody comes running on, on his property. They're in the pool. That's an issue. There's been twenty-six deaths already this year.
No.
Drownings, drownings, lakes and pools. Um, the latest one was a one-year-old.
And parked.
Yeah.
Got a park, yeah.
And there were people out at the death, I don't think that-
In Jerry, the code, the code is on the fence, it's a lockable gate, whereas on the cover, there's no lockable. There's just, you could just not use your cover that day. I mean, so it's a weird, it's a weird gap in the code.
Get under that cover and you wouldn't even know.
Yeah, it's just a weird gap in the code. There's no way that you can assure, like, the gate has to have a spring hinge or an automatic lock on it, if it's gonna be code, and that means there's a good chance it'll be locked when the one-year-old comes up to it and yanks on the fence. Whereas the cover, if you forget to motorize or, or manually pull your cover across, you get an open pool there with no fence. It's, I think it's crazy.
Yeah.
Well, the board of building regulator, regulators told me, there's gonna be, there's gonna come a time where it's gonna be handed down through whomever. It could be the attorney general's office, whatever. You need to comply with this. I just wanna make sure we have modifications within our bylaws that say-
You need a fence either way.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
So we could write it into a bylaw that has a fence, four-foot fence, automatic closing.
Mandatory.
Yeah, as a mandatory item.
Yeah. And, and, and it has to be written up within a way, and of course, we're gonna have our legal department.
I think KMPF will have to look at it.
I have a question. This is because I actually ran into one of these at a house that I had to go repair a window at. They had a nice fence around, couldn't get into it unless you were in the house, cause then you could walk out of the house and walk right into the pool.
You have to have an alarm in it, you have to have an alarm in that door. That door needs to be alarmed.
Okay, that, and that's, that's why I'm asking. What do we do for that kind of situation, an alarmed door? Okay.
Yep, the door has to be alarmed. Um, the, the fence has to have an automatic closing gate. It also has to have a plunger, fifty-four inches in height at the top. Um, your fence has to be all the way down to the ground. Um, you, you can't have large spacing, two-inch spacing. It, it's, it's just, it's, it's pretty simple. Um, it's all about life safety. It's protecting, protecting our children, protecting our future.
No, no, I heard you've had trouble with that, and, and that's ridiculous, especially with what's been going on now.
Well, I basically, I, I got, um, Mike Murphy involved. Um, I even got legal counsel involved, and the guy finally was just, okay, okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. And it, I shouldn't have to work four or five hours for that one issue, when it can be put right in our zoning bylaws, saying mandatory, period.
Can we do just a very simple zoning bylaw for October that says that any, and we can list a bunch of things. We can, while we're at it, include some of these detention counts that we have to put in all our subdivisions now. Anything that has X amount of, you know, whatever the amount is of water, has to have, you know, a four-foot fence and have all of it. Can we, can we do that as a zoning bylaw?
The pool code says, the National Pool Code says anything twenty-four inches of water or more has to have a fence around.
Okay.
Is your, is your answer?
Is it, can, are we able to, so if we put a zoning bylaw together, do you know if that will be a problem, if it's different from what the state building code, or if we can do it?
That's, that's the problem. That's the issue. That's where we have to get guidance, cause we need to make a modification to this, to modify it so it fits regardless.
Well, generally, under home rule, we're allowed to make a law that's more restrictive, but not less strict than the state law. So, so that's, I don't think this is the problem. I think this is doable. We just wanna, we just, so, like I said, we could probably, it's probably another one of those that we could pick up from another community, modify to, or just even the state code, modify it.
Get the code from Jerry.
Yeah.
Jerry, could you share that with her, the National Pool Code?
Maybe. Yeah, sure.
Is that small enough that, like, we get it through in October? This is, this would be the time with all these, these issues that have been going on.
But those are the major issues I have right now, that I, I mean, I have a lot of other smaller ones, but I think it's basically, um, I know everybody want, doesn't wanna hear this, but I think it's a re, re-cortification of our zoning bylaws. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that. Well, Danielle does. Okay. Because our, it just, well, I don't, I don't wanna say I really think, but-
Yeah, some of it's a little old-fashioned.
Correct, yeah. And it, as, Latin word, wishy-washy, it's all over the place.
It hasn't kept up with the times.
Yeah. I can go one area, it says, and one area says yes, and the other area says no.
Yeah.
What?
Need to fix that.
Yeah. Um, this, there's a lot of, a lot of room for interpretation, but the interpretation is only by me.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, I think we can, uh, we can take care of some of those, but we'll, let's start with these. And then, um, and if you have another one that becomes a problem, let us know, and we'll just start working on it.
Well, I appreciate you all listening to me. I really do.
Thanks for coming.
No, I, I think you're, you know, again, this is about life safety, you know, you're, you know, why would anybody, you're trying to protect the kids and the lives of these people, you know, why would anybody? I think the pool one's a slam dunk at town meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
So I, I, we'll get that one for you, no problem. The ADU thing's gonna be a little trickier, because we're gonna have to modify it a little to make, to keep the people in the higher-end district happy, but, but, um-
That, that needs, that needs some, that needs some work with the public.
Yeah, and that's the other reason why I don't think it's good to try to get October right now, is cause you need to sell this. And it's gonna take you a little while.
I agree.
You're gonna have to sell it, and so you're gonna have to have a couple of public hearings, as, you know, said. And you gotta take some input, and then we're gonna, we'll, and then we'll work on what we find to come up with for one, based on the input that we get. It'll also give us a feeling for whether, how it's gonna do with town beating, and what we need to do to sell it. I mean, I think that's how, that's how we go about this. So, okay? Good. Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
No, thank you. Once again, thank you all for listening and having me here. I appreciate it.
Yep, no, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna start working on these right now.
Excuse me? Thanks. I, I said I'm old.
That's why, that's why I left the room, you know? I had to go get my, my wife dropped off my electronic devices from my ears.
Yeah, I could use one for my ride, eh, but I don't. So, well, thank you very much once again.
Thank you, Jerry. Thanks.
Okay, um, I guess, uh-
So more in the, uh, two-hundred River Park?
Yeah.
They did not add the extra handicap parking place. A lot of plans.
We'll tell them to do it, we'll do it next time.
And I, and I look back in the minutes, you know?
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to make sure that it was recorded in the minutes that we- recorded in the minutes that we had actually accepted. They get the four, they get the four in the front and the one in the back, and I had asked for another one, because they had a set of four parking spaces there, with, with the...
Where the ramp was.
Yeah, the ramp was in the area where you used to get out if you have a wheelchair, the extra space, which the next car could use to get in to reel up, they didn't add it.
So we're gonna tell them, we're gonna have to load on it, we'll, we'll...
Yeah, we'll just have them fix that, and we'll do it. And actually, nobody is ready for their plan endorsements, because we have received the updated ones from David's, so...
So basically, we have to accept, we have to release the technical, the technical section minutes?
Yes, that's right, I had forgotten they existed, but Debbie reminded me that it's...
Those are, those are old.
They are really old.
From two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah, you and I are the only ones left. And I don't know, I started as the, as the chair, and you finished as the chair. That happened. Maybe I was just the chair that night, using here. I actually read that, so we're interested in reading those again.
I don't know how to call it, when was it, August?
You came in late.
Came in late.
Right, but, and then you signed off on it. But Debbie had me as the, as the chairman, and Bill as the vice chair.
Okay, yeah, Pat and I showed up a little bit.
I think we can get out of here soon.
I actually missed this video. She was pretty good.
Yeah. She was, she was very good.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. She kept us all on the need of kids.
She did. She did, she did a job with that. Okay, you, you have a motion there?
For the executive session.
You have the executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Plenary Commission vote to release the Executive Session minutes of August twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
And the motion is second, critical discussion. Do you mean none, all in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, whoever, show of five in favor, no opposed. Are there all five people here talking?
We're all here today. And you don't have to call road call, because we're all here.
Yeah.
I did put this into the GFI on the, on the hour.
Yeah, so the only thing we really have left is that we need liaisons, right? Thank you, boys.
Well, I've already got, what should I do on finance committee?
I mean, you know...
Oh, I guess I'll be on the EDC, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I don't mind being in finance.
Fair enough.
Can you guys let me know when you decide who's gonna be what?
Okay, okay. So Jeremiah and Ryan, I know, Ryan, you have recreation, which is good that you have, so, something else, housing partnership, do one of you guys want to take on that?
You which one?
Housing partnership.
It's inactive right now, I think, but, I mean, you have someone?
It's the Metropolitan Area Commission, that one's still active, right?
Which one is?
The Fourth of July Committee is inactive, Waste Water Advisory Committee is inactive.
I mean, I go to those, so whoever is liaison doesn't have to do anything.
All right, who wants to be your liaison to that, because that's an easy one?
I, the MABC, because I, I attend all their meetings, so whoever is the liaison doesn't have to do anything.
Yeah, because Jill's the liaison now, and goes on...
Well, basically, everything that Billy Valo mentioned, it needs to be picked up probably.
Right.
And John Cody as well.
And John Cody.
Like you just said, you were gonna...
Anything you liked, eh, Jeremiah?
Warren's good.
Well, I'll accept I'm a low man on the total bowl here, so whatever's left over.
No, 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 I'd rather you pick something that you're actually interested in, yeah. I mean, you know, if you're not interested in any of it, that's fine too, but I mean, but if there's something that...
I mean, obviously, some of it, I don't even know exactly what they do, so, I don't know, I'm not sure what the JT Berry Committee does, for example.
Well, that was, that was defunct.
That was defunct, too.
Should I take those off?
Yeah, so let's, so maybe this will help if we could go through them.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to do ZBA if that's, you know, off ZB.
No, that's great.
That's great.
Okay, so, so let me just run down these real quick and tell you, get an idea. I don't think there's a Fourth of July Committee anymore, so if it comes back, I'll go back on it, but right now, there's nothing. JP Berry Committee, I think that's gone.
That's one.
The...
Housing Partnership is, is mothballed at the moment, right, Danielle?
I don't think they have met, they're, they're not an active committee right now.
So the Waste Water Advisory Committee, that's morphed into something different now, so that's kind of not there anymore.
Isn't there one from the select board?
I'm sorry?
Isn't there a Waste Water something or other?
There is, and I think Warren is, you guys voted to make Warren last year sometime, but they haven't started.
I think it's just me and Mark Clark.
Okay.
Well, they, they, they've appointed people, but I don't think they've actually taken any steps to meet yet.
Okay, so leave, leave it there then, Warren, do that then.
On the Waste Water Advisory?
I'll keep it, yeah, I know a little about it, so...
There is no School Building Committee anymore, I don't believe, is there?
School Building, that's a secondary elementary.
They do still meet.
Do they?
Yeah, but it's...
They just reordained, I think, that the, the building, yeah, sorry, no, the Select Board, I think.
Yeah, I think it's a rock, right, they said this is kind of like the...
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, I mean, they're doing it, but it's kind of like...
It's only, it's only because of the litigation stuff, right?
I think there's a few other little things, but it's really like, they were all like, this is the end, this is the last time.
So having, having, having a representative there is kind of silly.
Yeah, I think so.
It should have been on the committee, but that was, that was different.
Okay, so I'm gonna take that, I'm gonna take that off our list, because I'm gonna give it to this man.
Yeah, I think that's, that's kind of what I get at, right?
Yeah, so...
Thank you for letting, was that, thank you for letting me?
Yeah, no, you're, you reminded me.
So...
There's no School Committee.
You're gonna take EDC, right?
I'll take, yeah, I might, might as well. Unless someone else wants to become that, I can go with Sashi. Nobody's joking after me, so I guess...
Okay, so Housing Partnership Committee, you said the kind of mothballed?
They haven't met, I don't know if there's anyone on it right now, so yes, I guess I can answer, yes.
Jeremiah, why don't you take that Housing Partnership Committee, and we'll see, if they become active again, we'll, we'll let you know, and let you go, because that's, that's, you know, that's actually pretty interesting, trying to get land and get housing and stuff like that, so it's actually, there's some learning you'll do in that, in that particular thing, I think, so...
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so I think that'll do.
Warren, he could take up name tag too, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, you just get input from Danielle.
Yeah, I go to their meetings, so if, you know, you have to go, I mean, you certainly can if you want to, but it's, it's an interesting chance to hear what's going on in other meetings.
Actually, my only thing is that I was thinking that this, MABC, are you going for Dave?
Which one?
MABC, Best Go Air Land Council.
Yeah, sure, put me down there.
Because, because you have a lot of knowledge in a lot of these things, Dave, so I think it'll be something that where, if necessary, you can contribute, but also you could bring it back if necessary, but again, Danielle goes to all the meetings and so forth, but
Carlos loved me.
Pardon?
Well...
That's just an inside joke, Danielle.
You're gonna do something conservation?
We'll kiss him in the back.
He's not our coordinator, ours aren't reaching for him.
And that's all you're saying?
I just question everyone, that's a...
Oh, yeah. Ryan, you wanna take LUC, because that's kind of connected to your recreation?
Well, it's a actual trip.
Yeah, okay.
How is school building?
If nobody wants it, I'll take school building. I'll take it. I've worked with them a lot in the past, they do good, so...
In con, in con, no.
Somebody do that.
I mean, I don't mind taking that either.
Okay.
It's still Zooming?
Yeah. They did one public meeting, and they found out they could Zoom, so connect safety.
Oh, that's because they came back, so they changed that week.
Yeah, the same day we were here having a meeting, they were changing the bylaw, the state right there. So I'll take conservation, too, I don't mind that.
Just don't worry about it, burn yourself, Warren.
Well, I'm not, because I got rid of it, I had most of my stuff.
One, two, three.
You have flipped them all.
Yeah. I think you're fine right now.
No, I only got three.
Oh, you got four.
Four. Oh, yeah, Waste Water, sorry.
Waste Water, that is an actual committee.
Four, yeah, okay.
And at some point, it's gonna get done.
That's fine, that's fine.
Oh, really, that's one, two, three? Well, we have five, if you leave on Waste Water. Go on the select board?
I got Water Select, man.
Yeah, Conservation.
Yeah.
Finance.
Oh, yeah.
And Waste Water.
You took that.
Huh?
You took that, finance.
Yeah, finance, yeah, yeah, mine, yeah. A lot of the finance committee is my church, so... If I'm there some experience, I think so. All right, so that's okay with everything, right? All good?
Yeah, it's all good.
You'll be okay?
Do we have a database of when these committees meet? Or contacts or anything, exactly, that's on this list?
We, we, we kind of don't, but the, the Town Clerk page does, I think that everything is, we, she actually does have a database, but the calendar, if you look at just like a month's calendar, they'll all be, they'll all be listed. And in fact, some of these boards and committees don't have their own month's page, really, or they do, but there's no information on it, so the calendar's probably the best way to do it.
So Melissa, like chairs, to like reach out and contact people?
I literally just, I just, when I have liaisons, I have a bunch, I just write them to tell them, I'm your liaison, put me on your, so seeing less than people do that.
I was just, I was just gonna say that, I was gonna ask you.
But I also check the calendar every week to see what's going on.
Yeah, most of the stuff is on, and it tells you if it's virtual or not.